Let me call them.
Use your title six.
West regions and due plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bruce, please, in prayer, please.
I will. Father God, thank you for the beautiful weather we've had today. Thank you for allowing us to gather to, uh, hold these meetings and help us, uh, uh, hold these meetings in a civil manner, whether we agree or disagree. At the end of the day, we just want the betterment of our town. Uh, thank you for everyone that's here, uh, with us. Well, thank you for loving us. Thank you for forgiving us. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to welcome all of the visitors, guests, our media. Road hall.
Bruce?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Denise?
Here.
Renee?
Here.
Trey?
Here.
Approve minutes of the February meeting. Denise makes a motion, Renee second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
First February financial report.
Uh.
Uh, something that I just wanted, I just wanted to ask because I, on that, is this the one we're talking about? This one?
Yes, ma'am.
On that first page, the unemployment insurance, like, why is that so much? Like, we're already above, I know it says that this one won but seven ninety-eight, but it's like two hundred and eighty-four percent up.
If you'll look at the original appropriated amount, it is sixty dollars. That was the amount that, um, Ms. Kay put in when we were initially constructing the budget.
So it went over that that much?
But it, it is, it is a large percentage, but the actual amount is only about fifty dollars.
Okay.
And then that'll be increased. We're, we're having a budget meeting next Monday and we'll be going through those things and making the appropriations.
There was just a couple of those, but.
Well, the, the thing is, is if salaries go up, that premium's gonna go up.
Yes.
I had a question about the, the paint. That, that money was, was gonna be coming from the excess in the computer program, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's gonna be covered?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you take any bids on it, or?
On the painting, we did not have to take any bids on that because it was such a low bid. We don't have to take bids on anything of under ten thousand dollars. I think that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Fifteen hundred Chinese, right?
Now, what all buildings is that gonna be?
The whole complex right there.
Whole what?
That whole side of Main Street from City Hall down to the library.
No, 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 not this. The police department, City Hall, library, and.
Same as this?
Same as this, okay.
Make a motion.
Oh. Well, this is not the bills. This is just for the financial report.
Yeah.
Make a motion for a proof financial report.
Motion by Steve, second. Second by Michael.
Bruce?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
All right, group bills to be paid.
I got a one question on that. Donnie Simmons mileage retro, what is the mileage for?
That mileage is for, um, he's not able to drive any city vehicles with his car. So he's having to use his personal vehicle. And when he does any city be, any city business, it was agreed upon by the former board that we would pay his mileage just for his hours while he is at work.
And he and I have had a discussion about that, and he's gonna get the guys start doing the running.
I mean, that just opens up a presence. So if another employee gets a DUI, has to have the breathalyzer, we're gonna pay him too?
I mean. And mileage is seventy-three cents a mile, so it adds up really quickly.
Well, we have.
Or seventy cents a mile, I'm sorry.
We have three working for Water Department. Can't one of them drive him around?
That's what Shane's saying. They, they just trust it, and that's what they're gonna start doing.
We've always had two working over there instead of three, but.
I do have two things I need to add. I think Shane's got one of them to talk about, but the flag hole behind the bedroom's part was broken during one of the recent storms. And late this afternoon, I have been working with Forkland today to get quotes on that and to get three hundred feet of rope to replace some of the frayed ropes. A lot of the flags are gonna be replaced.
We don't, does the insurance cover that any?
It's, it's a small expense relatively. I, what I did, instead of just getting enough to replace that one flag hole, we usually keep extras on hand. Uh, so I just went ahead and bought three sets. It's five-foot increments that are male and female on each end, and you just put however many you want, as high as you want that flag hole to be. So instead of just buying one set, I just went ahead and got three flag holes and three, we needed two hundred feet of rope. Um, the flags at the police department that we erected back in the fall also need some work done to them, so I wanted to make sure we have plenty of rope. So I got a quote for three hundred feet of rope and three sets of flag holes. And if the toll on it, they're giving it to us. Uh, Nick at Forkland, emailed me earlier and he said he appreciates us and our continued business throughout the year. He's gonna give us all of that at cost and not charge us any markup or anything on it. So it's gonna be just shot eight hundred dollars for all of that, but that will get us through at least for the next year or so to where we can replace those that need to be replaced as they get broken or.
Does that come out of general fund or does that come out of?
Secu-ization.
I have one other question for you, Beth. How long is this retro run back to, on Donovan?
That, all, only things on the retro are things that I had to pay since the last board meeting when y'all approved the bills. And the only thing that I pay before y'all approve it is if the due date falls before the board meeting or something like the mileage, but it's something like that, that day-to-day that we have to do.
I'm talking about the mileage.
That mileage, that is for the past month. That was for the month of February.
So when does this end?
Two dollars?
Now, but he's been told to not be, good, yes.
So, excuse me, is that gonna be eliminated from, from this going on?
What is, what is that public entity partners renewal?
That is our insurance premium for the year. It's time, we just renewed it. I just got all of the insurance paperwork in this week, and that is the invoice for the whole year.
Is that the liability policy for the city?
Yes, and the vehicle policy, workers comp, everything.
Okay. I, I'm stupid, guys. Who is Howard D. Happy?
That is our office supply company.
You don't see the little truck that says Happy? I'm, I'm mo, I'm going most time.
Yes, that's our office supply company where we order paper and ink and all that stuff.
Who in the world? It sounds like a party thing.
We're having parties at City Hall.
I can tell, I can tell. Wow.
Start rumors. Then, did you wanna go over this bid?
Uh, yeah, I could, I mean, I was gonna do it later, but we can go ahead and now.
I just, yeah, I just need it approved when y'all approve everything.
Right. We'll jump ahead on that bottom of the agenda. Chris called me down here. He's fixing these windows, the upstairs windows. And he replaced the wood on the first three, but when he got to these other three, they're worse off than the first three done, so. First, he was gonna replace those three, then caulk around all the other ones. Well, caulk's not gonna fix that, so we're gonna have to actually replace the wood on that as well. Caulking it, he said, you know, it'll work for a little while. Eventually, it's still gonna have the same thing. Water's gonna get in behind the wall and it's gonna ruin the ceiling. So he said he would do that for sixteen.
Sixteen fifty, he gave it, uh, he's doing those a lot cheaper than the original three. He said, I'm already down there working. I'm not gonna charge you another twenty-eight, and we'll just do it for sixteen fifty on the rest of it.
So basically, he's got these three done, and he's always, he's come around the front, he's caulked all that, and he's just waiting to see what we decide to do on these other three.
Well, but hold on just a second. We gotta, gotta approve the bills to be paid for the last one. Do we have a motion?
I wanna make a motion. I'd be.
And a second.
By Renee, second by Denise.
Bruce?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now back to Chris's deal. The original bid was twenty.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred to do what he's doing, so it'd be twenty-eight hundred plus the fifteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen fifty. He told me fifteen yesterday, but he must have heard something about that.
So he, he was gonna do all six for, for twenty-eight hundred?
He's, he does bid a three plus caulk around the other three and around the front for twenty-eight hundred.
The extra hundred and fifty, he's gotta come inside and go upstairs and put some nailers in on this side of the window.
But these three boards here, he thought he could get by with just caulking it, but once he got up there, it's, I mean, it's already, I mean, he pulled pieces out of it, so it's not worth caulking.
Yes. Something definitely needs to be done.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we'll go ahead and approve that quote.
Motion by Bruce. Second. Second by Steve.
Michael?
Yes.
Renee? Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
But I do wanna say, just my opinion, I, I mean, I voted yes and go on and finish what we started, but you know, I don't know how much longer we can sink money into this that's not, um, it's, it's just a running bit. I mean, it, I understand that it, it's a, a historical building, and I, like everybody else, would love to preserve it, but there comes a time when we can't keep preserving. I'm just saying, I'm just saying for the record. Okay, moving.
On that note, I will say, if you remember last month, when Okina came and sprayed, they went underneath and inspected it and brought me a bill over ten thousand dollars to redo some of the work on the bottom. And that is extremely high, so Chris is also, he's gonna go under there when this project is done. That may be another several thousand dollar expense that, because the floors, we've got mold and rot underneath there from the moisture, and there needs to be a moisture barrier put down, and then that wooden stuff has to be replaced. Some of it, not the whole floor, but then it's gonna have to be.
We're gonna have an exhaust fan put on.
Yes.
Go ahead, have more, it needs more ventilation too.
Probably from what's going on under the floor, so that's gonna be another expense.
There was one, there was one at the back years ago.
Of what?
There, there was a, there was a fan in the, uh, in, in the vent years ago, I guess it played out.
Beth.
It probably didn't get that big.
Do you think that we could advertise on the city page that we rent this out for parties or whatever?
We do advertise it a couple of times in here. We don't do it regularly.
Why not?
Um, I, we can do it.
You know what I'm saying? I mean.
We can get on there.
At least get the money back that we're putting in it.
Exactly, and, and just, you know, some people may not know, you know?
I don't have the figures. We do rent it quite a bit, especially like around Christmas, we rent it a lot. I mean, we have people calling that we cannot fulfill their wants because those dates already taken up. And then through the first of the year course, it slows down. We may rent it once or twice a month.
That's what I'm saying. It's, I think it needs to be consistent on our page.
Just put it on there.
I can make a ten post at the top of the page, re-civic center rental and put the information on there.
Yes.
All right, so we don't have any old business.
I got a question. Is, yes, when we're renting this out, is there a contract, uh, rules and?
Yes, there is a contract to rules.
Alcohol.
Yes, no alcohol, no drugs, no smoking inside the building. It goes through. What they have to do to get their deposit back, they pay a hundred dollar deposit, two hundred dollars to rent. After they leave, used to be Brenda, now it's me. I come down here, I inspect it, I make sure that it's clean, that they've cleaned the floors, they've cleaned the bathrooms, any, any part of the building that they use, that they put it back like they found it. If they don't, or if they break the rules, we had some people down here drinking one weekend. We did not give them their deposit back because there was fights. I think y'all were down here, it might have been before you, I'm not sure, but we had several police officers down here that night, 'cause they, it was a party we weren't aware they were having. They told us it was a birthday party for an old man. And that's not what it was. Uh, so they did not.
He might have had a birthday, all right.
It might have been a birthday, but it, it was a heck of a birthday party. Um, but we do, they do have to sign a contract, and if they break the rules or they don't do that cleaning list according to what's on there, they don't get their hundred dollars back.
I, I rented the Main Street Center and, and their deposit is the same as what it is to rent it.
Oh, is it really?
So.
The truth is, if it was very bad, it'd take the two hundred dollars to fix it.
Right, because like after Christmas, you know, the more that you rent it, you might overlook one little thing that somebody didn't do. Well, then after Christmas, it was in pretty sad shape, so I, if you, if you leave it in bad shape, then I have to get Margaret down here to clean it, and she charges us sixty-eight dollars, I think. And she'll come in and shampoo the carpets about twice a year. That's just regular upkeep on it. But anything extra that she has to do, we keep that deposit to cover, having to pay her to come down here.
I think it's worth giving that hundred dollars up and not have to do anything.
Yep, yes. So Trey, are you saying that at Main Street, it's a hundred dollar deposit?
I don't know. Whatever, I don't remember exact number, but whatever it was to, to rent it out, running the deposit was the same.
So that would be two and two.
It was the same amount, and then once you left it, brought the key back and they inspected, they saw, they sent you a check.
Do we know how much Main Street rents?
I don't, but I can find out.
Which would you find out?
Two hundred dollars to rent an event center is very, very cheap. Dyarsburgs are, like, they're, they're chamber building. They rent it for like fifteen hundred dollars an evening. It's, it's very, very high. So it is, the two hundred dollar rental is a very cheap amount anyway, and it may well be something where with the upkeep, if we're gonna continue to keep the building up, we may have to raise that to offset that cost.
We'll just look into it and see what they're doing up there.
Okay, I'll call, talk to them tomorrow.
New business, uh, second reading of the beer ordinance to sell on Sundays. Do we have a motion?
I wanna say something, uh, regarding that. You know, last minute, I made a remark that, you know, we already have two places to sell beer, and you got six days and the other, other six days of the week to get the beer there, you know? But I patronize that store, don't we? A lot, and I do business with Roberts Gibson. And, uh, they do business with us, so I try to keep that working relationship, and I'm not against it. Because I think that if the others can sell it on the other six days, if he wants to apply for the permit, and if it's approved, yes. Uh, the issue between, it used to be property line to property line, now we're looking at door-to-door, interest-to-interest, and that's fine, but it needs to stay, if it's gonna be like that, and needs to stay like that, it needs to be clarified from this point forward.
It's in there.
Okay, well, that's fine, man, but.
Minimum five hundred feet.
And also the rules, rules that they have to abide by.
Yeah, and I know, you know, on Sunday, one time out of a thousand, somebody's gonna be on school property. I get that, but, uh, I'm gonna stand like I stood last month, and if, 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 uh, Tim Gibson wants to apply for, you know, for the other six days, I don't have a problem with that, but I just think that, you know.
Do we have a motion?
That's how I stand.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Denise, do we have a second?
My second.
Second by Trey Woods.
It's revenue, it's revenue.
Yeah, I know that, you know, and I had a man say, you don't understand the grocery store business. I know they're not gonna come in there and go buy a beer. They're gonna buy gas. They're gonna buy a corn dog. They're gonna buy a potato chip. I get that. I get that, but they can do it every, the other six days.
No call.
Bruce?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Renee?
No.
And it's, can I speak? Am I speaking out of line? But it's sad, you know.
I got four.
We don't, there's not anybody representing any churches here to, you know.
We, we are not a church, though.
I know, but the public, I know we're not the church, but you know, we, uh, I get that.
I say we're not. You, you are the church.
That's right.
But, but originally, the city is not a church.
I, I understand.
We represent the believer and the non-believer.
That's right, but there's no one out here representing the church to voice their opinion on declining that. That's what, I.
I know about it.
Yes.
Kinda what I think.
Yes.
That's what I said to Mike on the way in. I'm like, why aren't there more people here?
Yeah.
I figured I'd get a cuss.
They're, they're what, they're aware of.
I'm here, I support it.
You support it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Say something.
Yes.
And this pertaining to this church that was let be down here inside a business district, and it's the only church other, and, and, uh, that's actually in the business district. So if you're gonna let that church im, im, impose or encroach on the city business, when, for one, there's nothing there that's legal. The, the church was only, a church in the town of Ridgely can only take up twenty-five percent of the lot that it sits on. I believe that one's got just about the whole lot covered, and it's not supposed to be in the city proper, in the business district. So that church, in my opinion, being sort of illegitimate, and I'm not saying that illegitimate is God, so don't, don't get it this way. But the church is in a spot where it should never have been built. And why it was let built there, I don't know, because someone.
That's another.
That's, I know.
That's another issue there. We need to move on.
But what I'm getting at, and the, and the point I'm trying to make is, you, you're treating that church, when you go to that five-hundred-foot rule, that's in a business district, and it shouldn't be there. I wouldn't even look at that church when you're considering business.
It's no different than the one it has on in Little Cockburn. I mean, you've got to have the footage.
Right.
And I mean, that church has been there before that church ever built.
The civic center isn't.
That's irrelevant. That, that's irrelevant.
Well, what I'm saying is, you're trying to use DUIs this church to say the dollar store can't have beer sales.
No, no, nobody said that.
No, then clarify that with me. That's what I'm asking.
The dollar store with this new one, uh, have, it'll be within five hundred.
But even.
Minimum of five hundred foot.
So this is what I'm asking. So this did pass in this, in this, when you just had?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's a minimum of five hundred foot, yes.
Okay.
Run door to front.
That's run door to front.
I just clarified something for me.
But I also wanna say that this is a gathering place. This is considered a gathering place. So if that dollar store right there wants to have beer, that's not gonna happen, is it? Because this is a gathering place.
This is, this is not a permanent gathering place.
It's not a church. It's, the, the ordinance says a gathering place.
Well, very well, I mean, no, that's what it passed. A public gathering place is measured from door to door. Probably five hundred feet. If it's less than five hundred feet, no.
Okay.
The way that's read, is that right, Ms. Christine?
Yes, sir. Door to door is what your ordinance says.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'm just clarifying so that we understand that this is a gathering place as well as churches or whatever, or school or whatever. This is a public gathering place.
All right, next on the agenda is Mr. Phil Vogel.
It's, it's really not a public gathering place. It's a building for rent for people to house gathering, so it's not public gathering.
All right, and I, I, I'll take that too. I just want that clarified.
I'm not correct on that.
All right, this is, uh, I had to give you all a copy of this, uh, and to the property owners that are here who have a copy of this also. We put this together. This, uh, proposal of the purchase of property that was recently purchased by the city originally located behind the businesses on Highway seventy-eight. The owners, the owners of adjacent properties would like to purchase the section of property directly behind them, leaving the city at four foot right-of-way at the very back section. Uh, this area could be paved and utilized for parking and still be accessible to all the utilities uh, and future entrants off of Graciel Road rather than have to come out on the highway to get to the businesses. But in order to do this, the utility's gotta be moved to the rear and be placed in the right-of-way. Uh, this would allow for the owners of buildings to expand their businesses and create new needed revenues for the city. The purchase price of each section will be determined by the appraised price at the time when the city purchased the property. I have a couple of those laying out on the table, uh, which was a little over eighteen thousand dollars. All right, we're not gonna be held responsible for any of the other stuff the city paid out to purchase the property. We'll take the property there. The property owners will be responsible for, uh, let me get ahead myself. The purchase price will be determined by, uh, how much property each person gets, uh, divided up by square foot or square yard to determine the price to cover it all. And, uh, and it would be a responsibility of the property owners to pay for the new surveys, title searches, and closing costs, and add the other cost on the purchasers, with the exception of any cost, uh, that would be city applicable, uh, aside from, of the deal. And we believe that, uh, there would have been a title search due at the purchase, uh, of the property. And if you have a copy of that at City Hall, that we could get it. I don't know if they give you a copy of it, title search or not, when you buy a property.
I've got the whole, I've got the whole packet that we got for the purchase of property.
Because ideal is, is what these guys, we're all trying to save money here and do this.
Bill, Bill, how much foot are you talking that they will get?
It's gonna be different, 'cause everyone has a different.
Well, they have the same width. I'm talking about the width, the thickness.
It's the same deep. It's all, it's the same all the way across.
Well, what's it gonna be? They'll get seventy-five feet?
Yeah.
They'll get seventy-five feet?
Seventy-five.
How much did the city buy?
About an acre and three quarters.
You bought what?
One acre and three quarters.
Yeah, but how many feet back did the city buy?
Our line before, seventy-five feet back.
So they'll get the whole seventy-five foot?
No. Twelve feet.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet. That would be.
For a roadway.
So they're gonna, they're gonna get sixty, sixty-three feet? Sixty-three feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Well, actually, buying seventy-five feet, you know, the city just retains a twelve-foot easement. So they can put, gas can go in there, the new sewer line can go in there, water can go in there. Any optics, anything that needs to be brought in can be put in from the back.
Now, what about the price for moving the gas, the water lines, and the sewer?
Don't know what that's gonna take. That's up to your city. All they're wanting to do is buy the property. You're already gonna be moving the sewer back there.
And their grant for that, yeah, we got, what was that grant for? How much, remember?
Grant through who?
I've got three or four different, I would have to pull them. I've got like four different grants.
We got a grant for that. We have to see how much it was.
Let's hear the truth.
I think it was one point, some, not sure.
About one point.
One point nine. I can look off, but I'm.
Some of that was water department and the lagoon, wasn't it?
Yeah, some of, that was water department.
Water department first, fix the lagoon, and then fix this, you know, that's what the program was here. That was what it was.
One point nine three million dollars was the total grant amount for that project.
Water plant.
Water plant, lagoon.
Now, now, partial lagoon, the rest of that lagoon work that we got the fines for on that director's order. I'm in the process now of closing a grant out for those repairs. It's a separate grant.
Okay, what kind of grant is it?
It's, it's still through Northwest and T L M.
CDBG grant?
Uh, no, um, it's a different, I've got the paperwork down there.
This, this one up here, is it CDBG?
No, it is A R P. The CDBG grant will be the, where we applied for the water meters. They're gonna do the drive-by electric meters, because the project to do the ones where we just press a button at City Hall, we're gonna be over a million dollars.
So the water meters, the water meters involved in that grant?
No, this, like, that's what I'm saying. We've got three or four different grants just for water right now going on that we're trying to get money.
The one point nine million's gonna take care of the.
Head and drive and.
The water plant, part of the sewer, and the lagoon, and up, and up there.
So at the time you're doing the sewer work, Doug, what's the chances of getting a gas? Oh, the gas line is done by the man. But now you can build anything for, you don't have any utility. The person buying the property, they're gonna have it hooked up. The gas line, there's no issue. If I, if I decide, I gotta bake a lot. They've gotta be with, if I can decide I want gas up there, it'll be taken care of. I'll take care of the gas. Right, you gotta do the taps. You gotta pay for the tap. Taps should be put in. There should be a tap put in at each property as that goes through the back, whether it's tapped off or whatever, it should be a tap put in.
But Steve, the biggest thing is, is beforehand, everyone's gonna come on the highway.
I know all about it.
Well, now they're not gonna do that. Everyone's still.
Now, the other thing is, is that would be, the water would be out. The water would be out, there's a city move, and you're gonna recover your revenue for putting that little bit of water line in. You'll get that off your water bill.
What you're saying, Steve?
What, uh, do we have a match on that grant?
Yes, um, our match is, you know, we've got, if you look on the budget in the water, there's two separate lines that have on working cash on there. The second line is like two hundred and sixty-three. Without pulling it out, looking at it, it's two hundred and sixty-three thousand.
What percentage?
Our match on it, I think on that one is ten percent.
Ten percent?
Ten percent, yes.
Four hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that's why on the meters, we, we, on the meters, we're trying to get the cheaper ones, because our match on that one is also ten percent. Our portion on it was gonna be a hundred and eight thousand dollars, so we're trying to get a quote. We're just doing the drive-by ones, 'cause they're.
That's on the meters. What about the match on that?
It's ten percent on that one as well.
Ten percent on that one as well. So we're gonna be a hundred and some thousand dollars out of pocket for moving it.
But that's that COVID money that's been sitting there in a separate, separate line item all these, all this time. That's what that was earmarked, earmarked for. So we'll pay that out of that, and then we should have enough left in there to pay the match on the one for the lagoon and hopefully the meters.
Thank you, sir. Uh, cemetery, Mr. Daniel Callens is gonna resign from doing that, he said it's just more than he could handle. So we're gonna post it, post a job and a banner and also on social media to find a replacement, unless any of y'all wanna do it.
Can you take her?
We do have somebody that's interested in it.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that he wants his name put out there right now, but I have instructed his fiancee to get him in touch with Daniel and maybe go out there with him one day, when he's going out there to mark one and let him show them what all is entitled. And then if he's interested in it, he can apply for it after that.
Sounds good.
Does the, does the board know what it entails?
No.
I got an idea.
Because I seem like I think about the second time someone has resigned from doing it because they didn't know how much.
Well, he just, his health.
He's seventy, seventy-eight years old.
I get that.
He stated to me that when he took it, he never intended to do it for longer than a year, that was just never related to any of us. So he kinda sprung it on me, he said, my year's up, and I said, what are you talking about? And he said, well, I told them when I took this, and I only wanted to do it for about a year. He wants to travel some and go spend some time with his brother, and so we just went away, we, we went out.
Yeah, and I would be, that, that needs to be clarified.
This person is, this person is in their fifties or a little bit younger, a little bit better health.
Here's, here's the problem.
If they wanna, if they want to commit to being on, on call twenty-four seven or not.
Right, that's, that's gonna be a problem with it, and who's gonna be on call twenty-four seven, like you say, for what it pays? You may, you may ask for two people.
That's what I was thinking, we might need to get another person involved, in case, in case he goes out of town or something, that we, somebody we can call back on as a backup to call to take his place, because who wants to, I gotta stay in originally seven days a week, because I might have to mark a grave.
Right.
I mean, that's a lot to put on somebody, but I mean, it wouldn't be bad to train two people to do it and have a kind of an element.
I have a perfect solution. There's a kindergarten class.
Oh, bless.
And they got those tow truck trucks, they got bulldozer, I mean, my gosh, that's our solution.
I think so.
And all I got to do is feed them pups.
It's different about filling a grave back up, you gotta make sure you're in the right grave when you bury somebody.
Can we, uh, can we reach out to Tipperville or, 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 uh, Hornbeak and see if they have any documentation of what it insists up to do that job?
We can, I mean, if basically you are marking graves, like if someone has to raise.
You gotta be able to read them out.
Yeah, you gotta be able to read them out.
You have to be able to work the pro, because if you go out there, we have.
But if there's documentation, we can draft that and put it in our policy a minute.
I can check with Tipperville, we don't have anything like that, they, like, Mr. Burke did it for so long, after Mr. Danny gave it up, Mr. Burke did it. And then when he passed away, we just really didn't have anybody, so.
It would just be smart to do that.
It would be very, be very smart, and I'd look into that. I loved it, but I just don't know, they can work the pro.
Did y'all do this by acclamation or you gonna do a roll call?
What you got?
Property thing.
Oh.
Is there anything to vote on?
I don't really know there anything to vote on, it's just a moment. But I mean, we really need to get everything put together.
Is there a price hasn't been established yet?
I agree.
Is there been a price established?
Well, the price is gonna be divided six, seven ways out of that eighteen.
Depending on how.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get the eighteen back.
You gonna get all of your money back.
Yeah.
We'll divide it.
Not the attorney's thing, but you're gonna get your profit back, the eighteen thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars a lot.
And we don't know what it's gonna cost you, the utilities and stuff.
Forty-five hundred.
I mean, the total of every.
The title work and everything, yeah.
What the attorney charged for this?
Four thousand eighty-seven. Might as well say.
I didn't make enough copies of those, they have on the other end of the table.
We're, we're unanimous.
Yeah. Twenty-six thousand.
Don't you have to get somebody to survey and actually break it up into like.
No, wait a minute, they're gonna pay for the survey. All you guys gotta do is sell to them, they'll pay for the survey and everything.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all, what do y'all want to do? Steve, Bruce?
I wanna wait till we, till we look at it more, table it.
All right, we're gonna table it till we look at it more, and we'll get back to you.
Cause you're looking what it cost, cost this was twenty-six thousand eighty-one dollars.
Attorney fees should have never been paid, y'all know, that was way overshot.
We, we ain't gonna get that, that four thousand. Cause it, cause that was the total of it, it's this minus.
You get the rest of the back, grateful businesses up there, you'll get it in taxes, you'll get it back in taxes.
All right, uh, we gotta have a not, pass a non-discrimination plan for the lagoon project, and it was included in your package.
Hey, let me ask something, who's Title VI coordinator?
It's Jackie Hoffman.
Will that not work?
Do what now?
Will that not work?
We had to fill out paperwork for Title VI, and we have to do this, this, the type of grant, they were, they've been working for two years to get us a grant approved for that lagoon work that needs to be done. This is one of the only companies that was willing to go forward with the grant, and this, this and the Title VI coordination were the two things that they require.
My second. Make a motion by Steve, Michael Ford's second.
Okay, Bruce?
Yes, ma'am.
Denise?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Yes.
Chief Tubbs, update, please, ma'am.
So I believe right now, we, I don't have the paperwork with me, but I think we're somewhere around seventy percent on our budget. With all the changes that we've done in our administration, you know, new chief, all new officers than what we had six months ago, seven months ago, uh, with the addition of Mr. Clark, used to be the chief in Rutherford, the way we were doing our tickets and our court system, he had some questions, he's like, well, we did it this way in Rutherford, uh, plus everything that we did with our evidence. So I reached out to M T A S, to David Moore, asked him to come down to visit the police department, go through everything that he could see, just to see if we were pointed in the right direction. Uh, he said he liked where we were at, that he was impressed compared to when he was here last year. But he did give me some things to work on, uh, one, the evidence room, and this is something we don't have to do, we can wait, as long as we talked about it right now and, and we put it on it. Uh, the evidence room, where it's stored, he would like for us to finish what was started, there's a piece of sheet metal. Uh, right now it looks like a jail, it's a cage. So there shouldn't be any way that you would be able to reach your arm in or toss something inside there or anything, so they want that completely sealed. But like I told him, you know, that's something we can wait until the new budget comes through and, and we can tackle that.
Cause he wanted to have that one.
He said he didn't care, as long as nobody had any type of access, right now you could kick something in there or, you can't reach anything, but we don't wanna, you know, if somebody has, oh, whatever the case may be, right now only two people have a key to that room, and that's myself and the assistant chief. Uh, and I'm the only one that has the key to the cage where the evidence is actually stored. Uh, he said that was fine right now, but as long as we, we put that in motion to fix that, we were, we were fine. He also, you know, put me in contact with a guy that specializes in the court system and ticket writing, he's supposed to be visiting with me next week. Uh, we're gonna make sure that if we're not doing it right, we start doing it right, so, uh, but he was impressed with where we were at so far. Also, uh, I received the last invoice, uh, for the stripes on the car that we purchased from the county. Um, I'll turn that into best, I got that today. Um, now I can start the reimbursement process next week, so hopefully in a couple weeks, two, three weeks tops, we have the full reimbursement back for that grant.
On the, um, situation with the, the court thing, and, and you're following up on the court thing, does Leah need to be involved with that?
So that's, that's, that's one of my things, so these are questions that Tim had brought up during court that he talked to her about, and it's, it was questions that she had also. We don't think she's doing anything wrong.
Okay, I just, it's hard to be involved.
Beth actually, after talking with Tim, she's, uh, signed up for a clerk class, and he said that that's exactly what we needed to do, but she had already started that. Um, so right now, when he comes in, we're just gonna make sure, uh, and also the filing system, so since the day I took over, every single ticket that has been written, every single ticket that has been paid, every ticket that has not been paid is in a, in a file, we can account for every one of them. Uh, the Alira system that we have right now, that we do all our report writing on, so the guy showed me something there, where now every single ticket that we do write, we can enter that into our Alira system, and that way we don't have to, we don't have to hold those hard copies. And there was a question, we wanted to know if we own the rights to that, if we decided to go away from Alira and go to another company. So we looked into that and we do own the rights to that, so anything that was in that report system, if we decide to go to another company in a few years, we have access to every bit of that, so, but, man, we're taking steps in the right direction.
Sounds like it.
Good.
On that note, I will be gone next month, from the night of the board meeting, I will be in Nashville. Um, there's a two-day conference at three to the city, the only thing that will be out is my mileage and my meals for those two days. Jackie will be acting as the recorder next three months at the board meeting, so y'all take it easy on her. She won't be able to answer many questions, but she'll be able to take minutes of what she's doing tonight and learn in the course of her sessions.
One more thing, uh, while we're talking about it, Tim brought up, uh, T C R S, is that what you wanna ask? We were gonna get that going?
Oh, I, I gotta answer on that.
Okay.
T C R S, if we do involve with them, every city employee, it is mandatory that they be involved, and the city has to match five percent, so it's not really cost effective, because some employees don't want it. Um, prior years before I started here, they were using Nationwide Retirement System, and I've reached out to our representative with them, and they're gonna come down sometime, and they'll sit in Shane's office, and they'll meet with each employee and ask them what their desires are as far as their retirement plan, and we will still have a match, but it won't be mandatory for each employee, and it won't be that five percent mark, so it will be a little bit more cost effective.
If you go T C R S, isn't it mandatory that every employee take it?
Yes, T C R S is mandatory.
You got some that don't.
And some employees don't wanna do it, so I didn't wanna, you know, you don't wanna force an employee to put money in a retirement plan that they don't want.
Right.
So, and then that, our match, the way I was looking at with the matches on it, the matches were gonna be so big, it was just gonna cost us a lot more money than what the retirement plan that we had before then. So Nationwide, we still have money invested with Nationwide from the former retirement plan, so I just felt like that would probably be the better cost effective, I just haven't, I didn't have any paperwork to bring with me tonight to bring that to the board, to make sure they wanted to continue that. So it's in the works, it's just taking time.
That's all I have for the police department, I do wanna acknowledge why it's here, you know, we hired Mr. Clark, and he, you know, he's came with a ton of knowledge that's, that's helping us, so I, I.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Got any updates, Darrell?
Nah, really, we just, just maybe just stand on top of getting trash up, lines up, hot hose up, everything, stuff we had, we gotta get some more COVID. Over, have we got, we're, we're standing on top of just jumping around, bad weather, we've been servicing our equipment, trucks. Keeping everything going ready for the morning.
Is there any way we can get the flags down when they're, when advisories?
Oh, they're with the veteran form. Yeah, they, we gotta replace them.
Yeah. That way, I don't have to worry about that again.
I've got all the flags pulled, I just got them this afternoon, so I've gotta get them to there, and we do have to get that other pole in before we can put the last one up, but we do have new flags everywhere.
Well, I, I'd rather see the flag come down when it's tattered, even, even if we didn't have the money to put it right back up, then that's fine, but don't leave a tattered flag of.
What, what is it with these short stop signs?
Move the ones that are two foot off the ground?
Yeah. Just asking, that's a direct question.
Got any polls?
We got some polls the other week, just started changing, better get to them.
Okay.
I get bracket, do anything, I need, I need to get them all and get them up.
Yeah, there's a couple of these stop signs that need replaced, they're not even red anymore.
Right, I gotta get more signs, stop signs.
You're coming down heading the street at the right time in the evening, the sun's going down, you can't see that one in the church.
Any citizens have any input?
I'd like to say something on that, I'm never tired of the plan, y'all sure, you got people say they act through them with that pretty much?
I believe that, Doug.
And then only except what the city pays, they pay whatever, just like you, whatever y'all minimum means, they're gonna give you three percent raise and put it in a retirement account, you don't pay taxes on it till you get sixty-five, and then walk away from that money.
Yeah, but some of them want it now.
Some of them want it now, they.
I've got the same thing in mind.
They, they better have that money now, they're not worried about thirty years from now.
I mean, this is money that you put in a box for money.
We do have a bid opening tomorrow with anybody, if y'all want to come, it's at nine o'clock.
Can you not transfer?
We are having a bunch of meetings Monday, anybody wanted to come and sit in the.
When is that?
Monday at nine o'clock, we're gonna have breakfast.
I'm already booked, I'm sure I noticed.
Anybody got any coming business?
I just wanna say, there was, uh, she had a paper in our packets that's just upcoming events, and I just wanted to add one to it. Um, the, the Friday night at the nursing home, they'll be having us singing from five-thirty to six, and they invited everybody that wanted to come.
I got a question, one more thing before we leave. Uh, so we got bad storm spots we're coming, right? I would like to know what, what procedure we have in place, uh, if they get rough, what, what we need to do, because I don't know, I don't know what the former administration.
The school's supposed to open up the safe hall down here.
And that's, but that, that revolves on the chief or the officer working.
We have accused of that, that was my question, if we feel the need, can we go ahead and?
Sure, but you can call somebody and tell them.
Well, we definitely will, I'm just saying, we can.
They would normally, they would normally go up there and open it and call dispatch and.
Principal immediately, I just.
They'd announce it.
Whatever say.
It may be your call or the officer's call.
So there are certain hall, it's.
The tornado hall.
It's the east hall.
And I probably should put a title on there, that's the spreadsheet Jackie does each month when we, water adjustments.
Yeah.
Um, that's just Shane asked me to make sure each of y'all got a copy of that, so we, because all that entails is, when we print the water bills, we can't do an adjustment on a water bill until the bill actually prints. So if somebody's had a water leak, or we've missed read a meter and we've missed it or whatever, then we have to go back after the bills are printed and do an adjustment on that bill. We have to keep a spreadsheet of those, and then on the twentieth each month, we pay our sales tax off that, so off what we billed this month, that's what we adjust it off. No, this month it was actually very small, sometimes it's a whole page of them.
Yeah, like, um, uh, next month it's gonna be more on there. Exactly, surprise, man, you're honest.
Any other business?
We wanna say thank you to everybody that helped get the number of signatures that we need, you all supplied for the grant. We really appreciate everybody coming together and getting that done.
We are eighteen shy.
Oh, I thought we had enough.
We had fifty-two turned in as of this afternoon, so I'm hoping maybe we can get them tomorrow, Jason had a really, really busy day today.
We've been out the last few days, we got, we got quite a few done, uh, Wednesday, Tuesday and Wednesday. We got to the point at the end of the day, uh, you know, a lot of people don't wanna hit the door, the cops knocking, especially after the darkness. Uh, so that, that was a little bit of a problem. And then there's a lot of people coming back.
But I think of the fifty-two that he brought me, what, what we needed is our median, median income was raised due to the fact that most of the people that filled those surveys out were in the higher income brackets, so. So it made us ineligible.
Gotcha.
So what he told me was you need to try to get seventy or eighty more and concentrate, try to concentrate on lower income households. The fifty-two that we had, nobody was over thirty thousand dollars, so I'm thinking hopefully maybe if I call him tomorrow, he'll say just that fifty-two lowered it enough, if not, we'll need to try to get eighteen or twenty more.
And what's bad about the whole deal, we were four percent over, not having to do it period, now how's that, I mean, it's crazy.
What's the lady's got anything to do, I mean?
That's how they base all that.
If we're needy or not, if we're needy.
It's the ability, that, they want you to show enough income to show that you have the ability to pay your match off like, it's like your property tax group revenue and things like that, that you got enough money coming in to cover your match, but you still have to be low enough to be considered needy, so it's, it, there's just a small, fine line there that you have to try to get into.
And a lot of times, you, you've got your elderly who can't get online, can't, they don't know how to fill this out.
That's right.
And that's really helped a lot, just, I had a couple of clients that said, well, they came, I've met the chief and he filled out that paper for me. So, you know, they don't know how to do it, and they've had the help of.
And also I'd like to recognize Ms. Christine Corinata, I didn't, she's hid behind the flag, she slipped in on us, that's our, that's our town law.
Hey, I wanna know if one of the person, Trey saved the city, other around four hundred dollars who put that console in when it came in, and so we didn't have to pay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Trey.
We also were gifted a two-hundred gallon water tank this week from Tiptonville, uh, Donnie went down there and they gave us a water tank that was gonna save us several hundred dollars, but we don't have to buy one, gotta have one after the game, we didn't have one, so we were gifted more that week, but it's nice. I had a question second on that.
Yeah, I got it.